While we are now out of camera in open council, I will ask the clerk to report out on my behalf, please.
Thank you, your worship. So I have three items to report out on. The first item is legal item number zero one of two thousand twenty five, Eureka Street. Council received information from Mr. Robert Gray relating to part lot thirty one and thirty three of Plan fourteen, Eureka Street, and council provided direction to Mr. Gray to respond to the legal council with a two-week deadline. Item number two, legal zero two of two thousand twenty five, Discovery Line. Council received information from Mr. Robert Gray regarding Plan Three, lots one to three, twelve to fourteen, and thirty with right-of-way registered plan twenty-five R fifty-six twenty-four. Right-of-way parts one, two, and three excluding reference plan twenty-five R six-two-eight-six, Discovery Line. Petrolia Council provided direction to Mr. Gray to proceed with rectifying the decades-old right-of-way as laid out on an old plan that was never implemented on a registry non-convert, a thirty-foot right-of-way which bisects the property as included in the deed as was never formally closed by the town. Property zero-three of two thousand twenty-five, council received a presentation by Mr. Trevor Benjamin, senior planner, reviewing seven current plans of subdivision at various stages of development within the town of Petrolia. As these developments progress, council looks forward to receiving the developments presented to them in open session through a site plan or draft plan agreements.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And we'll continue on. We have now the minutes of our previous meeting held on June the twenty-third. I'd like to ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt a circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any questions from council, errors or omissions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to a moment of silence. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to the council roundtable announcements. And tonight, we start with councillor O'Hara, please. I have nothing, I guess, at this time. Okay, thank you. Councillor Welsh.
Art in the Park, again, an amazing hit. I spent my allotment of money and then some, I think, but for a very steamy weekend, those people were in good humor.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely. And I will speak to that as well. Councillor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share. Thank you.
Councillor Patel.
Just ditto what councillor Welsh has shared, as well as the color run that was also in very extreme weather, was a great success. And I don't think the pitchers do it justice. And certainly the volunteers and youth and Kiwanis that put this on is, we're very grateful for their efforts.
Thank you, councillor Patel. Deputy Mayor Field.
Thank you. Just, again, comments of Canada Day, the barn dance, Art in the Park. Very hot days and staff service clubs, volunteers, like, I can't, you know, the town was just going crazy on the weekend, even with the heat. So it was, it was a great time.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And I too have a number of things to mention, so please bear with me. I attended the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership Annual General Meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, at the St. Clair Parkway Golf Course, newly renovated clubhouse. It was a good event with a packed house. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also in attendance. I have a copy of the two thousand and twenty-four annual activity report. For any councillor interested in reading that report, I have it available. I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new residents at Lampton College on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth. It was a great event with a large turnout, and I distributed a copy of the information to each member of council for your information. I also attended the Blue Water Health Annual Meeting on June the twenty-fifth at the Blue Water Health Auditorium. It was a very interesting event with a guest speaker regarding artificial intelligence. I distributed a copy of the agenda to each member of council for your information. I also have a copy of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five annual report for anyone interested in reading it. I attended and brought greetings and welcomed Main Street Credit Union official opening and ribbon-cutting on behalf of council and staff on Thursday, June the twenty-sixth. It was a full house and a great event. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also in attendance. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts and Communication, for all her help. I attended the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority in Strathroy on Thursday, June twenty-sixth. I have a copy of the agenda and package for any councillor interested in reading it. On a more fun note, I also attended the MPP Bob Bailey's barbecue on Thursday, June twenty-sixth at the Lions Hall. The entertainment and the food was great. Congratulations to all the municipal staff, volunteers, service clubs, sponsors, and all those involved with a very successful Canada Day celebration. The weather was great with a large turnout and a fun day had by all. I attended county council meeting held on July the second and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Sarnia-Lampton Chamber of Commerce Business Summit in Point Edward on Thursday, July the tenth. This was a great event, good program, and well organized. I have a copy of the program, again, if anyone wishes to read it. I attended the grand opening of Loco and Company at forty-two eleven Petrolia Line on Saturday, July twelfth. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts and Communication, and Denise Tebow, Downtown Business Liaison, for all their help involved in organizing this event. Congratulations to all those involved in organizing the Art in the Park, as previously discussed, on Friday, July eleventh and Saturday, July twelfth. It was a great event and very well organized. I would also like to thank the staff, volunteers, service clubs, entertainers, sponsors, and all those involved with the barn dance held on Saturday, July twelfth. The weather was great with a large turnout, probably the biggest turnout I've ever seen. And congratulations to councillor Deb Patel, councillor, in being awarded the Charles Third Coronation Medal for No One Stands Alone, Not-for-Profit, at the Sarnia Golf and Curly Club on Monday, July fourteenth, that's today. I was pleased to be able to attend the awards ceremony. Congratulations, Deb, again. The Kennel Canada Plant being set up at the two sixty Center Street on Wednesday, July ninth. I met with Mr. Damon Fetus and his son from France, and Mr. Mike Boss, general manager. The plant will specialize in the design and manufacturing of wiring harnesses, cables, and electric box bills, primarily for off-highway and specialty mobile equipment. They agreed to have an official plan after they receive a business license, and it's my understanding that they have submitted one. They have nine plants throughout the world, with Petrolia being the first in Canada. The plant in France will be the head office, and there was probably fifty to seventy-five people present. And Mr. Matthew Slawoski, Chief Executive Officer for the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership was also in attendance. And that's all I have. That'll move us forward to the council representatives on the different draft committees. First on my list is the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee. Council members are councillor Liz Welsh and councillor O'Hara. Which one of you two would like to take the lead? Councillor Welsh, go ahead.
Request to move this to our next council meeting, please, for approval.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll need a second or seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I do want to just mention that we do, there was some repetition in that, as you're aware of. Okay. Any discussion on referring it to the next meeting? All those in favor? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board. Our appointed representative is Deputy Mayor Joel Field. Joel, the floor is yours.
I think I brought this up on our last council meeting. This is just the minutes actually coming forward, so it's a good read and very interesting to go through, but I don't have anything new yet.
We do have the minutes before council. Would you like to make a motion that we adopt those minutes? Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
I thought councillor Hyatt had a comment.
Oh.
That the council of the town of Petrolia received and filed Deputy Mayor Field's update on the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board meeting held on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Municipal Services and Traffic. Our liaison member again is Deputy Mayor Joel Field. Councillor Field, or Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Thanks. A few items. First, I've work is going to start the work the week of July twenty-first. Notices have been hand-delivered to all residents impacted by the construction. Petrolia Line Water Main Tender is on this agenda for this evening's consideration, as well as Petty Bone Reconstruction Tender. Closed is on tonight's agenda. Work continues on the water treatment plant intake and low lift pump project. Council can expect an update in September from SEMA, as well as the building permits and the plumbing are all on there as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And I'm also pleased with the report from Mr. Thompson. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. All right. Any questions? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on municipal services happenings.
Any discussion from council? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to Planning and Development. Again, we have Deputy Mayor Field and councillor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on that? Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
I can run through. There's, there's some minutes attached or some updates attached. I guess, kind of a couple of highlights of the new credit union, as you have already previously noted, so it is now open for business. Second note is that Legion now has an outdoor patio, so anyone that's interested to visit the Legion, please do so and enjoy the great outdoors. Couple other notes about the water main project to support the southeast quadrant, so that's on the agenda for tonight. Those are kind of the highlights, and we continue the chat meetings as we go forward. So lots of great opportunity for me to learn because I have not too much background in such.
Thank you, councillor Hyatt. Would you like to move that we adopt those minutes?
Please.
Okay, I'll need a second or for that. Seconded by councillor Patel. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file councillor Hyatt's update on planning and development happenings, the second quarter building permit update, and the June two thousand twenty-five building permit statistics report.
Any questions from council? All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. Again, I want to thank, thank Mr. Thompson for your report again. Appreciate that. That'll move us on to correspondence. We have items A to F. I'll ask for a move or a second to put those items on for discussion, please. Need a move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the councillor, would you like to read that motion? Or does councillor wish to withdraw any of those items? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file correspondence items thirteen A through F.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to correspondence. And in regards to Sunday minor hockey, Will Davidson. We have correspondence that came in. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
So this section's consideration and a motion. I want to acknowledge the letter, but I want to receive and file it because I think there's delegations that are going to be coming to speak to it, so I don't want to action it in correspondence. So I moved that we receive and file it.
Okay, and we'll discuss that item with the other that's coming up shortly. I'll need a second or for that, please. Seconded by councillor O'Hara. Any discussion regarding that? I think we're all clear on that. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to the Petrolia Optimus Kerr Park Project. We have correspondence in front of you. I'll ask for a mover and seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Patel. Go ahead. What are your wishes? What is your direction?
To approve this, but I have some questions. My motion is to approve.
And I think probably if there's, we'll get some clarification. Would you like to come forward, please? I think we did briefly discuss this this afternoon at the medals award, but yeah.
I do have a bit of a present, a bit of a presentation, if that helps. And in the meantime, I didn't get this to you guys, but if you want to pass. I'm sending around a picture of the park from, that Brad took for us tonight on the way here. It kind of explains our situation. So, your worship, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Carol Watt, I'm here for the Optimists from Lampton Central Petrolia Optimists, President Sandy Haynes and Brad Goss from Soft Services to speak on behalf of our ongoing sponsorship and support of Kerr Park. For over twenty-five years, our club has proudly partnered with the town to ensure Kerr Park remains a safe, inclusive, and healthy place for children to play. Our commitment began in two thousand, June two thousand. We funded and installed the large playground structure, complete with a safety surface from Soft Services. This created a new, low-maintenance, injury-reducing space for children of our community. Soft Services donated a large portion of that material for the project for free. In two thousand sixteen, we refreshed the original structure and added a smaller play structure designed specifically for younger children. Then in two thousand twenty-one, thanks again to the generous support of Soft Services, we replaced the original safety surfacing under the large structure, which had deteriorated over time, with Soft Services donating a hundred percent of that surface. Most recently, we partnered with the Town of Petrolia Parks and Rec Department to address drainage issues between the smaller structure, which had rendered it unusable during parts of the year due to flooding and ice. After significant fundraising efforts and assistance from the town, we installed new drainage as well as Soft Services help. We not only resolved these problems, but installed the safety surfacing as well. That took a three-year plan. Today, we're here to ask you your support on the next phase of improvement. Due to changes in legislation, the town replaced the sand under the swings with pea gravel. Unfortunately, the gravel is now migrating onto the soft surface areas, a lot with the help of children. This is not only creates safety hazards, including tripping, slipping, and injuries from those dismounting, but also damages the surface itself by interfering with the interlocking tiles and embedding into the material itself. So it's a safety risk during ground maintenance, as gravel can be thrown during mowing and trimming as well. To address this, Soft Services has extended an exceptional offer to us to install their safety surfacing under the swing set for just twenty thousand dollars plus HST. This is less than half of the actual cost with the town Parks and Recreation Department doing the preparation work, and Julie Bullock has indicated that it's something that they could do. We respectfully ask the town to consider partnering with us once again to support this important park improvement project. By allowing Soft Services to invoice the town directly upon project completion, this arrangement will enable the town to recover the HST, resulting in an immediate savings of twenty-six hundred dollars to the project. Supporting this upgrade to eliminate reoccurring damage to the safety services reduces ongoing gravel maintenance costs and helps minimize liability risks to potential injuries. We hope these long-term cost savings can also help offset part of our costs, ensuring product action to preserve public safety and protect the town's existing infrastructure investment. Partnering in our commitment to, yeah, to prepare and repay any outstanding projects, our club will actively fundraise and make annual installment payments with a goal of full repayment within three years. Any grant funding that we receive will be applied immediately. In summary, together we can ensure that Kerr Park remains a safe, vibrant space for children and families to come to Petrolia. We deeply value our longstanding partnership with the town and look forward to continuing this shared investment in our community's well-being. We are proud of our twenty-five-plus-year partnership with the town and our shared success in maintaining Kerr Park as a welcoming and safe place for all. And we thank you for your continued consideration.
So we'll just move along here because this wasn't the delegation time, but I just want to clarify just exactly what you're asking.
We're asking, after talking to Brad today, that the town would pay the invoice coming through from them once the project's completed, which hopefully would be fall or spring-ish, depending on timing, and that we would repay the town over three years with some, hopefully, contribution by the town through the maintenance Parks and Rec budget.
So, and we briefly discussed it, but the one statement showed twenty-four thousand dollars, which the town's already putting in three thousand?
That's right. That's the preparation work, right, Julie?
Is that, that's correct, Mrs. Bullock? Okay. All right, just, I'm okay with that. I'll open it up to council. Councillor Welsh.
So just clarification, so we're, we're doing the prep work?
Yes.
And, and then we are also contributing over the three years to?
One, Julie will discuss that in her budget considerations, whether or not she can do that. We're hoping that the savings that you're going to get from not having to try and keep out the gravel out of the lawns and off the surfaces will allow some movement in our direction.
Any other questions from council? Is council clear on this? We'll probably, I think we, did we have a motion, Mrs. Pearson?
I think councillor Welsh is just tweaking it based on the answers she just received. Yes.
While she's doing that, Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Just that we're always very happy to partner with the, this club on this project, and that we have loved working with the, the optimists on this, so.
And I too want to appreciate all the work the club has done on that park. It's been great, and I have seen it over the years. Councillor Welsh.
So I would move that we support the Petrolia Optimists' request to pay the invoice from Soft Services and that the optimists will fundraise and reimburse the town over three years with some budget considerations from the town to assist.
Yeah, I'll need a, a second or for that. Deputy Mayor Field. Okay, any discussion from council regarding that motion? You've already heard it read. You don't need it again. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you.
And I will. We did, our next on our agenda was a presentation from Mrs. Janice McMichael. Dennis?
She's provided her, your worship.
Okay, she is unable to attend. We'll move on.
Actually, your worship, but we do have a presentation to Maria of our, our partner at the St. Joseph's Hospice.
Okay. If you can say a few words.
Love to, thank you.
Do you want to just, let's do this. There really is money. You can say a few words. Go ahead.
I'll wait till you get your seat, your worship.
Thanks, Mary.
No problem.
Thank you so much, your worship and members of the council and the general public. Good evening. On behalf of everyone at St. Joseph's Hospice, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the town of Petrolia for your contribution and general support for everything that we do at hospice. Since our beginning days, the town of Petrolia has contributed over forty-two thousand dollars to our mission and a truly remarkable testament to your community's compassion and commitment. At St. Joseph's Hospice, our mission is to walk alongside individuals and families during life's most difficult moments. We provide compassionate care and support to people living with a terminal illness, their caregivers, and those grieving the loss of a loved one. Since opening our residence or our resource center in two thousand and five, we have supported more than forty-eight hundred adults and children through grief bereavement programs, caregiver support, wellness services, and children's grief groups. Since two thousand and nine, when we opened our ten-bed residence, we have cared for more than two thousand four hundred and fifty-four residents in their final days, offering peaceful, a peaceful, home-like setting where families can focus on love, comfort, and connection. This work is most made possible by our three hundred and sixty dedicated volunteers and the generosity of donors like the town of Petrolia. All of our services are provided at no cost to all families in the county of, in Lampton County. While we receive portion of government funding only for our nursing costs, the remainder sixty percent of our annual budget needs to be raised each year, and that is an additional two-point-five million that we rely on our community to help us raise. And now we were, we are preparing for a new chapter, one that directly impacts Petrolia and other rural areas in our region. Thanks to the unwavering advocacy of MPP Bob Bailey and the support of the Ontario Government, St. Joseph's Hospice has been approved for an additional three new residence beds, hospice beds. These beds will be located in a dedicated space within our rural community, helping us reach even more families who may have previously faced barriers accessing our care. And this location will be announced shortly. The new rural hospice locate, location will feature private suites with washrooms, a common area kitchenette, and accessible parking. While renovations are minimal, we are aiming to open the space in late winter of two thousand twenty-five. This expansion represents a significant step forward in ensuring that our rural families, like those in Petrolia, have equitable access to the same level of compassionate end-of-life care that has become the hallmark of our hospice. We are incredibly proud to bring this care closer to home for our rural communities. It's not just about more beds. It's about reaching people where they are and honoring their final journey with dignity, support, and peace. As we prepare for this growth, we know that we will need to raise even more to support our ongoing operations. But we are confident because time and time again, communities like Petrolia have supported us. So once again, thank you for being such a vital part of our journey, for your continued support insurance, ensuring that no one in our community faces end of life alone. With your help, we will continue to grow, reach further, and serve with the same compassion that we always have at St. Joseph's Hospice in Sarnia, and I thank you for that.
Just before you go, and before I open it up to council, I certainly want to thank you for all you do, and I have been involved with what you do. Most of us here probably have. I think it's great. I'm also very excited, and county council's been involved with the addition of the extra beds, and I'm really pleased to hear that. But I will open up to council for any comments from council? If not, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
I just appreciate everything you do. You, you have impacted my family, and if anybody hasn't been to the hospice, they need to take the tour. And I think it's amazing that anybody that comes in there and wants a tour, you get up from your desk and give them a tour. So I really appreciate that, and what you do for the community is, is great. Thanks.
I'm just proud to say that out of ninety-seven hospices in Ontario, the increase of beds is only eighty-four, and we actually got three of those beds. So that just talks volumes about what we're able to provide our community and to be able to go into the rural areas. I'm just thrilled about that. And, and deputy mayor is actually correct. Monday to Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, if anybody wants a tour, we put our pen down because if sixty percent of our funds comes from donation, it's not my hospice, it's yours. So you're always welcome to come in and take a tour. We just completed renovations as well. That took us twenty-two weeks, seven years to fundraise, and it's absolutely beautiful. It was home-like before, but now it's just breathtaking. So I welcome you all. If you all want to be there tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, I'll be there. If not, whenever you have a chance, please stop in and say hello. Thank you.
Anything else from council? If not, we thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you, everyone.
That'll take us to the next item on our agenda. It's Mrs. Corinne Nata, the Manager Development Services Chief Building Official. Please come forward. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Certainly a tough act to follow on that. Now we're going to talk about pools. So Development Services is here tonight at your request. We did receive a motion and the request to be here to talk about your pool bylaw and the potential that there were some allegations that your bylaw contradicts the Ontario Building Code and Fire Code. So I just want to touch base on a little history here. In two thousand and nine, the town required all pools to be enclosed by a four-sided fence. So the house- sided fence. So the house was not allowed to be one of those walls of the enclosure, but in 2017, the town did approve for the house to form part of the pool enclosure, provided certain criteria was met. The town of Petroya Pool Fence Bylaw does not contradict the Ontario Fire Code or Building Code in any capacity. It actually supersedes it. If it did contradict, then the provincial codes would be, um, would be in place. So if a person is of the opinion that no restrictions to any means of egress in their home, although not required, that's their choice. So if they don't feel comfortable restricting any openings that aren't required under Fire Code, maybe they don't want the third egress door in their home to be restricted. Maybe they don't want the bay windows out of the kitchen to be restricted. Uh, they don't have to. The, uh, alternative is building the fourth side of the fence. So there is options. And each home and pool project is reviewed site-specific. So it really depends on the makeup of the home, where the pool is going, and what the request is. So windows, doors forming part of the pool enclosure, i.e. the fourth side of the fence, it must conform to the bylaw, and if it doesn't, again, that's where we're in the fourth wall of the fence. So you can still enclose your pool. You just can't use your house as one of those walls. The bylaw currently does not allow cameras, water disturbance alarms, or alarms in generals on doors. They're not permitted in the bylaw. It's not allowed to be exempt them from the four walls around the fence, around the pool, sorry. It's important to remember that the bylaws aren't currently in place as it relates to the occupants of the home. It also becomes visitors and trespassers. It's meant to be a barrier, so nothing can fall in the pool by accident or incident. So again, if a person does feel that it's too restrictive for the egress, because not every window and door in a home needs to be an exit. There are certain parameters that can be met, um, that bedroom windows, yes, but if it's in that pool enclosure and it can't be restricted, then it cannot be used. So the next steps in the bylaws, uh, we're working on the property fence bylaw. We're close. Uh, we're going through a final revision that's come back from a few municipalities and it's going through legal one more time. And there's also a pool fence component in that. Of course, every municipality can tweak that bylaw to how they wish to proceed with it. If they want to go back to a fourth side of a pool enclosure fence to not be the house, they can do that. If they wish to continue with certain parameters, uh, they can certainly do that as well. And that comes back for council consideration. This bylaw is passed under the municipal act. It is not passed under Building Code or Fire Code. So it is a municipal decision how they want to proceed. There are some of the, uh, updates that we're looking at, and we had some issues here earlier this year about hydro spa pools, hot tubs, spas in general. Um, you see a lot of swim spas now, uh, in people's yards. So those, uh, we're going to update some of the language around that and different parameters. The four-sided fence reconsideration, um, other special provisions and permissions depending on the site specificness of a site. Uh, ability to apply for variances directly to the committee of adjustment or council, however council deems it appropriate in the bylaw. Uh, so they could pay a fee and have it reconsidered site-specific, no different than a minor variance in a zoning bylaw. And then also looking at fees and penalties, i.e. if you're not maintaining your fence, you could be subject to fees if you're not maintaining your pool. So it doesn't have frogs and, and, uh, it's green. Uh, we also need some provisions with regards to that because we do have some people that find themselves in situations where they can't afford to maintain their pool or a pool pump, and so they still need to maintain it. So we need that language in the bylaw. So that's all I have for council tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, yeah, before you go, thank you for your presentation. I will open it up to council. Does council have any questions for Mrs. Nata?
Um, perceive if council has any direction that they'd like to have consideration in, in that bylaw, um, as Ms. Nata directed. But yeah, absolutely. Other than that, receive and file is-
Okay. I'm looking to, for direction from council. We can receive and file it, or do you have anything? Council Welsh?
Wow. Thank you, Corinne.
I need a second. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Any discussion from council? I don't think we need to read that. Thank you for coming to inform council. And, uh, all those in favor of approving that motion? That passes. Thank you.
May I add one more comment, sir?
Sure, please. Go ahead.
If anyone has rate pairs that call you and they need clarification on the bylaw, and they feel they're not getting the answer maybe from a staff member or what they're finding on the website, have them call me directly. I'm happy to answer their questions and go through the site specificity of their property and also attend their property to have a discussion. So never hesitate to have them reach out to me directly.
Thank you. And just for everyone present here too, I just want to confirm that our bylaw, as you said, does not contradict the fire or building code. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a delegation from Courtney Sinclair. I have two individuals, a Mrs. Sinclair and a Kevin Jacklin. Which one would like to come forward first? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Through the chair to council, my name is Courtney Sinclair and my address is 4548 Keating Street, Oil City, Ontario. I write, uh, I appear tonight on behalf of my grandfather, Tom Sinclair Senior. Tom Sinclair has rented the ice at Greenwood Rec Center from the town of Petroya on Sunday mornings, as far as our records go back at least 53 years consecutively. I am the third generation of hockey players to enjoy this ice time, uh, granted to my grandfather over the last 53 years. I also appear with my, uh, co-delegate Kevin Jacklet, who will also stand before council to speak to this delegation. Kevin represents the No Stars Hockey Group, uh, who are also a senior hockey group, have rented the ice, uh, for over 40 consecutive years. Uh, my grandfather and Mr. Jacklin, as well as other affected parties, were recently advised that the longstanding ice time allocated to the Sinclair Hockey Group and the No Stars Hockey Group and other affected groups, uh, have been changed to times that are both impractical and will have a detrimental, if not fatal, impact to our hockey leagues. Uh, namely, the Sinclair Ice Time was reduced from 80 minutes to 50 minutes and moved from 8:00 AM to 6:30 AM on Sunday morning. Similarly, the ice time previously granted to the No Stars at 11:30 AM on Sunday morning was moved to 10:10 PM Sunday night. We understand that this change, uh, came in response to a letter received by the town of Petroya from PMHA, uh, recommending certain changes to ice time. PMHA made several recommendations, including extending arena hours on Monday, adjusting the Petroya Squire's ice time, or practice time rather, and reallocating Sunday ice times as follows. Uh, number one, move Sinclair ice time from 8:00 AM to 6:30 AM and reduce the ice time to 50 minutes. Move the Flyers' practice to 7:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Uh, move the Girls of Lampton Attack to 8:40 PM to 10:00 PM, and move the No Stars Organization to 10:10 PM. PMHA urged council to amend ice allocations to, quote, "better utilize ice, free up several larger, more continuous blocks of primetime ice", and, quote, "provide additional flexibility to their growing program." Unfortunately, we believe that the flexibility sought and granted to PMHA unfairly favors the young male minor hockey athletes in our community and comes at the expense of patrons that wish to, wish to use this community asset. I appear before council today to urge the town to take action to reverse the changes made to the Sunday ice schedule back to that, uh, which was in place in 2024, 2025, and earlier. Uh, we believe that the justification for changing the Sunday ice allocations is faulty on several grounds, and reverting back to the previous schedule will ensure the ice allocations within the town are fair and equitable for all ages, genders, and abilities. Uh, first and foremost, uh, the changes to the Sinclair Ice Time or the No Stars Ice Time, or any ice time for that matter, do not achieve the stated objective of creating larger, more continuous blocks of primetime ice for PMHA. Uh, the, the ice time allocation right now is as follows. 6:30 to 7:20 AM is Sinclair, uh, followed by a PMHA ice time from 7:30 to 8:50, then followed by figure skating, and then filed again by PMHA, and then that is followed by public skate. As you can see, the PMHA ice time on Sunday morning is bifurcated by users every hour on the hour. And so the, the objective of achieving more, um, longstanding or undisputed ice times is not achieved. Secondly, uh, we became aware of a letter distributed to, uh, PMHA members today, which admits that the proposal to change the ice time does not result in more ice time for a PMHA. Therefore, the objectives that they stated in their letter received by the Parks and Rec Committee are not achieved by the changes that they proposed, and therefore, uh, we suggest that they should not be implemented. Secondly, uh, there was an allegation that finding ice time in neighboring communities is getting harder, and we believe that this issue is overstated. Upon a preliminary investigation, we were, uh, informed by staff at the Watford Arena that the ice allocated to Petroy Minor Hockey this year remains consistent with the ice allocations that were granted to Petroy Minor Hockey in previous years, and therefore, we believe that the issue in finding ice is a bit overstated. The necessity to rent ice from other centers has been the status quo for PMHA for many years. Um, as a past participant in PMHA, I recall traveling to different centers when I played many, many years ago, and that problem is rooted in the fact that Petroya unfortunately only has one ice pad. The solution to that problem, uh, cannot be to deprive other users of a reasonable opportunity to use the ice pad in Petroya. Uh, third, we believe that the treatment afforded to senior hockey players is unfair, and the alternative ice time which has been granted to us is inaccessible, exclusionary, and not an acceptable accommodation. Um, other than ice time granted to the Petroy Squires and the Flyers, the pros' ice schedule for 2025, 2026 grants less than four hours of ice time to senior hockey players. And such ice time is, uh, allocated out obscene hours of the day, including 10, Tuesday at 10:00 PM, Thursday at 9:40 PM, uh, which is for women, but I wish to note that this ice time often starts well after 9:40 PM because it follows the Flyers and their games often run beyond 9:40 PM. Uh, Sunday at 6:30 AM and Sunday at 10:10 PM. Uh, the effect of the decision to take ice times from senior hockey players at reasonable hours and only grant them ice time at extremely unreasonable times, early in the morning and late at night, is to effectively place barriers that prevent these athletes from enjoying the ice and participating in the sport at all. A similar situation recently wrote, arose in Canora involving the Canora Women's Hockey League, uh, wherein the city took certain ice times at what one could, would consider prime or more reasonable times and substituted them with a 10:00 PM ice time. Uh, this resulted in league participation plummeting to an unsustainable number as that ice time was incompatible with work and family lives and unsustainable for most players to commit to. In a demand written to the city of Canora from Mr. Douglas Judson as legal representative for certain players, Mr. Judson pointed out that in that city, 31 hours of ice time were allocated to adult men's hockey and only two hours to women's leagues at times that were, quote, "virtually unusable, unusable and exclusionary." Mr. Judson went on to explain that the allocation of ice time was discriminatory towards women, uh, in, in that it basically placed a barrier towards women achieving ice time at all in the city. On the same premise as the argument put forth on behalf of Canora Women's League, we suggest that the deprivation of senior recreational athletes to reasonable ice time in Petroya may be discriminatory as well. The alternative ice times, uh, presented to Sinclair and No Stars at 6:30 AM and 10:10 PM respectively is not an acceptable accommodation, nor is it an accommodation in any sense of the word. It is patently unreasonable to expect a single user to only have an ice time made available to them at 6:30 AM on a Sunday morning at that or 10:10 PM on a Sunday night and nothing else. Suggesting otherwise is out of touch with reality and, and, and many of the athletes that are here today, uh, their family and work lives. A few years ago, uh, the town was faced with a similar constraint. I believe it was when the Flyers came into town. Um, at that time, our, our ice time was for change and we worked with the town and we ended up moving our ice time from 9:30 AM to 8:00 AM. Now, that was a change that was a bit inconvenient for our athletes. However, we were able to, to grow with that change because it was reasonable in the circumstances. Uh, similarly, the No Stars also faced that change, and they changed their ice time at that time when the Flyers came into town. Again, it was acceptable at that point in time because the accommodation was reasonable. In this case, we suggest that the accommodation that we provided with is patently unreasonable. We too wish to foster the development of youth athletes in our community. However, we urge council to take action to ensure that it's not at the expense of all other athletes in the Petroya community. As a senior hockey player myself and a product of PMHA, I can attest to the fact that it's already extremely difficult to find ice time so that I can continue to play hockey and stay active in my community. I am the only woman that plays during the Sinclair Ice Time on Sunday morning hockey. I'm very grateful that I have that opportunity and I have a lot of fun with my, my fellow athletes, but the reality is that there really isn't another option for me to participate in hockey. Um, the only other ice time that is catered towards women in Petroya is Thursday night at 9:40. And myself and so many other senior athletes have jobs and lives that make it unfeasible to commit to that ice time. After we received the proposed ice schedule for 2025, 2026, we relayed this to our athletes and our organizations, and the consensus from many players was that if this isn't changed, then they won't be able to play. And I fear that both of our leagues will succumb to this decision, bringing an end to our longstanding tradition of over 53 years of Sunday morning hockey. With the exception, sorry, my fourth argument is that the arena is a community asset that should be made available for the use and enjoyment of persons of all ages, genders, and abilities. Uh, with the exception of Timbits Hockey, PMHA is primarily comprised of male youth athletes, and, uh, all female youth athletes are governed by the Lampton Attack Organization. Therefore, the stance that incorporating the recommended changes brought forth by PMHA will benefit youth generally is misguided. Uh, we've, in speaking with members from the Lampton Attack Organization, we were advised that, uh, they essentially lost prime ice time at 5:30 PM and instead were substituted ice time at 8:30 to 10:00 PM on Sunday as a result of these changes. Uh, and, and they also let us know that that time is effectively unusable by their organization because they have rules that will prevent them from playing that late at night, um, on a school night. Suggest that all community members deserve an opportunity to use our community asset. And again, I appreciate that the biggest demand for ice in our community is by the youth. Uh, but as patrons of Petroy and surrounding communities, we pay taxes that contribute to the upkeep and betterment of Greenwood Recreation Center, and we should be permitted an equitable opportunity to use this asset. I also note that over the course of the last 53 years, as it-
I'm just saying, you're, you're running your time limit. Can, can you wrap this up quickly, please?
Absolutely, I will.
Thank you.
Over the course of the last 53 years and 40 years, as it relates to the No Stars group, par-ice rental has been a consistent and unwavering source of income to the town, which has helped ensure that Greenwood Recreation could continue to be a viable asset in our community. Our ask is that the town take action to revert the Sunday ice schedule as it was in 2024, 2025. Reverting the schedule will not detrimentally impact the youth in our community, but it will ensure that players of all ages, genders, abilities will have an equal, equitable, and fair access to our community arena. I fear that failure to act on this position, issue could result in many hockey careers of many athletes in this room, myself included, and I really hope that we can continue to play hockey in the town of Petroya. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Before you go, um, a couple of things. I know there was a motion from the Parks and Recreation Board. However, if you've noticed, it did say in principle. So nothing's cast in stone. I'll open it up to council. Again, remind council that it will go through me, uh, Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, thank you for your presentation.
Through me, Deputy Mayor Field.
Through you. Um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I have one question. You're speaking on behalf of your father and grandfather, or are you representing your? I read through this and thought you should be a lawyer and found out you are. So, um, I guess I, I'm just finding out, are you representing them or speaking on behalf of them?
Through the chair to council. No, I'm not acting in any legal representative way. I'm just acting as a-
And I, and I'm not trying to be smart.
granddaughter.
You definitely get the right strokes, first.
And just to be clear, if it is legal, our discussions end. So I'd like to clarify that.
That's where I wanted to make sure.
Through the chair, I want to be abundantly clear that this is not a legal position. I'm just speaking to you as an athlete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open it back up to council. Any other questions from council?
I think I may have some general questions, but I'd like to hear the other presentation that comes, uh, through, through the No Stars. Will they also be speaking?
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask. Yeah, I think the, uh, Mr. Jacklin, I've got down to, to address council.
I think I'll have some general questions maybe after I hear.
Oh. Okay. All right. Right? Thank you. No, thank you. All right. Any questions from council or any decisions from council? Council O'Hara.
Your, your worship, uh, I maybe missed that in your presentation, but does minor hockey have increased teams or what's, what is the need for them to have more ice time?
I'll ask Mrs. Bullock. Uh, my, my understanding is just to have them move around for better times or more suitable times for the younger minor hockey players. Is that correct?
Yes. So PMHA came to us requesting more ice time as they do have more members. Uh, we do have some representatives of PMHA heat sitting in the gallery, so they maybe could answer that question more clearly. Council O'Hara, your worship.
Council O'Hara.
Your worship again. And, you know, this is not a new thing. This happened, uh, a few years ago when, uh, staff, basically they whacked all the old timers like me. And, uh, then the town staff did take another look at it and, uh, come up with a solution that was there. So at that point, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Then we refer this to, uh, staff and come back to council.
All right. The motion. I need a second to put that on the floor for further discussion. Seconded by Council Welsh. I'll open it up now for discussion. Now, I think there is, is there a concern for time here, Mrs. Bullock? Or are you okay to wait till our next meeting, which would be September?
We can wait until the next meeting. There's, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any discussion from council? Counselor Hyatt.
I also had a motion, so I'd like to maybe just add a few points to what-
We have a motion on the floor. You can amend that motion or we'll vote on this and then you can bring your motion forward.
I think I'll just amend what was presented.
Okay, what's the amendment proposed?
So the amendment would include to create an arena ice scheduling allocation policy and procedure with possibly looking at benchmarking the city of Saranero-St Clair Township to provide detailed guidelines for the providing of fair ice time allocations to meet the needs of the community.
So you're looking at a policy. All right, so-
Like to add the policy.
You want to make that motion as amendment?
Maybe add one other line item that would say that we suggest that staff work with the existing primetime Sunday ice user groups to try to achieve the increased blocks of ice time for the PMHA as requested, but it becomes a collaborative effort as opposed to a mandated effort.
So we have a motion regarding this amendment. I'll need, did I get a second for that amendment? I'll need a second, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All right, so I think I'll get that read again just so we're clear. And then remember, we're just voting on the amendment first. Mrs. Pearson, can you try and just make sure we're all clear on this before I call the vote?
And the amendment as stated is that the Greenwood Rec Center has a high demand for ice time for all user groups during primetime hours. Therefore, be it resolved, an arena ice allocation policy and procedure be established to staff, benchmarking the city of Saranee and St Clair Townships as an existence to detail guidelines for providing fair ice time allocations to meet the needs of all in the community. And that staff work with the existing primetime Sunday ice user groups to try to achieve the increased blocks of ice time for PMHA as requested.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council regarding that amendment? Counselor O'Hara.
I think it kind of changed my amendment or my motion.
Which through, for that, your motion, Counselor O'Hara, was that they then return, staff returned to council with their report, so I think-
It, yeah, I agree. I think it's all part and partial. I'm okay with that. All right, any other questions? Counselor Hyatt.
I asked a question through you to Miss Sinclair. So some of the policies that I've been reading really talk about, there's criteria that say 60% of the users are from a certain municipality, like say, for example, the town of Petroya. For the user groups, for yourself, like the Sinclair group and the No Stars, sorry, is, would a 60% allocation or 60% user group being from the town of Petroya, would you meet those requirements?
Through the chair to council. I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I can confirm to you that we spoke with the mayor of Inniskillen, which is my township, and our tax dollars do contribute to the upkeep of the Petroya arena, so we believe that that's a valid point.
And do you know how much tax dollars are contributed to the town of Petroya's operation of the arena? And what the deficit of the arena in the town of Petroya may be?
Through the chair to council, I have no idea.
It is a very, the township of Inniskillen provides a very small percentage in terms of revenue to the town of Petroya. Approximately, you know, loss in the arena is approximately $280,000 per year. So there is a very large tax basis paid by the residents of the town of Petroya. So I just wanted to make that clear because in your letter it says that you do contribute to the town of Petroya, which you, arena, which you do, which I, which we certainly appreciate. But it is still heavily burdened upon the residents of the town of Petroya in terms of their tax rates to pay for the deficit of the arena.
Through the chair, I wish to point out that there is a new open border policy affecting minor hockey right now. So the arena, it could potentially be used by a lot of youth athletes that are not from our community and are not paying taxes, so we think that that's a moot point.
So I just, I'm not, I just want to clarify, Mrs. Bullock, is that still around $10,000 that they contribute?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, through Sinclair. So would you consider visiting the township of Inniskillen council to support your claim that there's open borders to see if they would increase their contributions to support the arena in the town of Petroya?
Through the chair to the committee, I believe that that would then require all members that are from outside the town of Petroya to go to their council and ask them to contribute, which would be a large endeavor. And if that's what you need us to do, certainly we will do that. But I also wish to point out that we have provided 53 years of ice rental revenue to the town of Petroya, so it's not just our tax dollars. It is our revenue that we have supported this great asset over 53 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Patel.
Just a comment. So I am currently not involved in this aspect, but I have certainly lived through the procedures of lack of ice time and kids and travel and everything. And I have confident that if we take this back to the staff, that we can come up with something that would meet better requirements. It'll never be perfect. We need another arena. But we don't have one as yet and we don't have the funds to put one in place. But I think that we could probably tweak this, or I'm hoping, I have confidence in the staff that we can come up with something that hopefully is more acceptable to everyone.
Through the chair. Thank you. I agree, Ms. Patel.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Just, yeah, through you. Just a comment. I don't want this to be about where people live. I know people that utilize the arena. I, we have our differences with some of the people that are donating or making contributions, but I don't want that to be about it. Minor sports in town is from people from Wyoming. People play ball in Petroya because we have a few extra diamonds and Wyoming has a great program. We have a soccer program that's great. So, you know, I realize that there's some differences, but I don't think that's the endpoint for me. I think that staff can work with the groups, the user groups, and we can definitely get some better policies and procedures in place for how we do it. But I don't want this to be an Oil Springs and Inniskillen, a Wyoming, a Watford. We have too many of those barriers that we built up over the years. We need to knock them down because when we go to build a new arena, we need Inniskillen, Oil Springs. We need everybody on board and we definitely need people to go back to their councils and support that. You know, we went through a little bit of trials with Wyoming over their donation. But I think that if the people that are utilizing the arena would talk to their, it would help. Because at the end of the day, this arena was built by a lot of people around this area, so. And it's utilized by a lot of people and we still try to claim the hunters even though they lived in Inniskillen, so. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Counselor O'Hara, go ahead.
Just one quick, one comment through you, your worship. This shouldn't be, and when we go through all this process, we shouldn't come up with a couple of losers, like the two teams that are losing their ice time. I think we can, certainly we could work on it. Maybe Petroy Minor Hockey will have to be a little bit flexible. And if we're all flexible, I'm sure we can work this out.
Through the chair, thank you.
Counselor still has the option to leave things the way they are and leave it the same. But we'll, anyway, we voted on the amendment. We'll now vote on the motion as amended. Now, we do have a motion on the floor for that, Mrs. Pearson.
I believe yes, we have. That was moved by Counselor O'Hara, your worship.
And seconded by, do we need a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Wells. All right, so we'll vote on the motion as amended now. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Mrs. Sinclair, thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you.
On the next on our agenda is the community announcements and recognitions and awards. We have the community announcements. There is a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That's for the council of the town of Petroya to receive his information only, the July 14, 2025, community announcements as presented.
Any discussions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add? A pretty big list already.
Thank you, worship. Just that if you want to see nonsense, we have about 160 tickets left total for the next two weeks, so now is the time to book those.
Thank you. So I hope, council, if you haven't seen nonsense, you better get your ticket and hope you don't have to sit alone. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the announcements, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. We have a report from Mr. Trevor Benjamins, Senior Planner regarding requests for extension of draft plan of subdivision approval for LB Investments. There is a motion there already on the floor here before you. I'll get a move and a second to put it on for discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells.
Actually, your worship, there was an amendment filed on that motion. My apologies.
Oh, when was that?
From Counselor Hyatt.
Oh, okay, so you want to do, go ahead with the amendment first.
Yeah, so just, so I'd like to amend from a three-year to a one-year as per the request from the developer.
Yeah, that is right. They did request one year. The planner put in for three. All right, you're moving that as an amendment. I need a second for that. I think the planner was recommending three years so we don't have to do this all the time. Now, I do know, I did speak with the developer, Mr. Leaper, last week who stated that he was unable to attend tonight and asked if there was any issues, if he, if we would consider tabling it until he could speak to us. But your point is well taken. He did ask for only one year. It's up to council. The planner is recommending three, just so we don't have to do this every year. Okay, Deputy Mayor Field.
Through you to maybe Mr. Benjamin. Is there a reason for the three that he's suggesting?
Mr. Benjamin, could you speak to that, please?
Through your worship, to Deputy Mayor Fields, planning stuff for recommending three years because the developer will have to get an official plan amendment, a zoning bylaw amendment, and then meet their draft plan conditions. That could be challenging to do in one year given the, no amendments have been submitted yet to date. So that it just avoids having to come back next year and ask for another, another extension. But I'm, except to staff, so that's all I can say.
Okay. So the reason I say one year is because we want to spur development. So if we say three years, then we're just giving him an option to say, well, I have three years, so I might as well wait for three years. So that's why I'm saying we go back to the one.
All right, you're making a motion to amend that. I'll need a second for that. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Okay, so everyone's clear on the amendment that we're going to change it to one year at the request. I'll call the vote. Then all those in favor of that amendment? Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now we'll vote, we'll need a motion. I don't think I got a motion on the main part of the motion. I'll need a move and a second, and this will be on the motion as amended. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Wells. I'll open it up for discussion. All those in favor of approving that as amended, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to our fire emergency management. We have a report from Chief Cousins, Fire Chief, regarding the second quarter. There is a motion on the floor you have. I'll ask for a move and a second to put it on for discussion. Moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief regarding the 2025 second quarter report of the incident responses, inspections, apparatus use, and public education events of the Petroya-North Inniskillen Fire Department as dated this 14th day of July 2025.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions from council? I'll ask the Chief Cousins, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate your report. Thank you for completing that report. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That takes us on now to Marketing Arts and Communication. We have a report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation, Facilities, and Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, regarding a road closure request for special event Black Gold Brewery Street Dance. And I believe you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petroya to endorse the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities and Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated July 14, 2024, regarding the road closure request and that the road listed above be approved for closure on the dates and times as listed and that the public notification be issued by the Director of Legislative Services, Clerk, Deputy Operations.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Okay, Mrs. Bullock or Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add? Oh, okay, all right. Any discussion from council?
Sounds like quite a shindig.
All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. We have a report from Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, regarding the Victoria Play Host Petroya software. And you've got a motion before you again. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to endorse the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated July 14, 2025, regarding the Victoria Play Host Petroya ticketing software and that council direct staff to sign and proceed with the attached agreement.
Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
Is this going to affect ticket prices at all?
Through you, your worship, no. It will be, we have a current $1.50 charge built into tickets for credit card and debit card processing that will, will still cover that expense.
Good, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. We'll go on. We have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the tender results for the Petroya Line and Oil Heritage Road Water Main Replacement Phase One. There is a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for further discussion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive the report of the Director of Operations dated July 14, 2025, regarding the tender results, Petroya Line and Oil Heritage Water Main Replacement Phase One, and that our water reserve and potentially Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund reserve pay for the town's portion of this capital project and that the project be awarded to Clark Construction in the amount of $1,029,800 excluding HST.
And again, as council probably read, that was low bid. Any discussion from council? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Just maybe two questions for me. One is that of the $1 million, roughly 50% will be the town's responsibility and the other 50% will be from the federal grant.
I'll ask Mr. Charlebot to speak to that, please.
That is correct.
And second question is, if we were to receive a provincial grant also for the similar project and we started the project in a month or so, could those costs be backcharged to a provincial grant if we were to receive it?
Go ahead, Mr. Charlebot.
Through you, your worship, they can. It goes back to, I think, the beginning of 2024 that we can go, these charges, if we're successful on the provincial grant. And if we are, we're going to go to Black Gold Party, I think.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Yeah, through you. When do we find out on the second phase of that?
Mr. Charlebot, do you have any idea?
Through yours, do you mean the second grant?
The second grant opportunity, when do we know?
We won't know until it happens. My guess is that we might hear something at EMO, which is in the middle of August.
Thank you. I will ask Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add to this project?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to the tender results for Petty Bone Street. And there's a motion before you there. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive the report of the Director of Operations dated July 14, 2025, regarding the Petty Bone Street reconstruction tender results and that the project be awarded to numbered company 2044970 Ontario Incorporated, also known as All Season Escavating, in the amount of $260,770 excluding HST.
And again, as council is aware, that was low bid. Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
Through you, just astonished at the difference in the tenders on this one.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Through you, worship, yeah, it's interesting, for sure.
Through your worship, yeah, it's interesting for sure. Yeah.
However, it's in our favor. Any other questions from council? Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
I'll just comment. I think it's a great project. I took my son down to the tennis court on Sunday and driving down Petty Bone was terrible. So I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
Get this moving forward.
And it has been terrible for a number of years. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us on now to Parks and Recreation. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities regarding the Petroya YMCA Bulk Swim Passes. You have a motion there in front of you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petroya to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five regarding the Petroye YMCA Bulk Swim Passes Pilot Program and that the council of the town of Petroya advise staff to continue the program for bulk swim pass sales.
Thank you. Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not this time, your worship.
Okay. Last call, anything, any questions from council? Don't, go ahead, councillor Welsh.
Really, really happy that this worked out and we're able to continue it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hyatt.
I'm just wondering if we could do some marketing that we're going to continue this uh, service again and uh, let people know that it will be, remain available. So I think it's.
I think we can, yeah. Mrs. Ellsworth, I don't see a problem with that.
Through you, your worship, no problem at all.
Glad to hear that. Thank you. Any other questions from council? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Seeing none, that'll take us now to new and unfinished business.
And your worship, I do have one additional item uh, to add. I have a notice of motion from councillor Hyatt this evening. Um, I will read that, or councillor Hyatt, sorry, has that notice of motion to read, and it is uh, to come forward at the September eighth council meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so take notice that at September eighth, twenty twenty-five council meeting, I councillor Chad Hyatt will recommend with a seconder that whereas section three point two E of the procedural bylaw details the order of business for council meetings and item eighteen and nineteen cause significant disruption, disruptions in the proceedings of a regular council meeting agenda when there is ca, when there is a cause for a closed session component. Now therefore, it be resolved that section three point two E Order of Business of Bylaw thirty-eight, twenty twenty-three, item eighteen and nineteen be amended as followed. When a closed session of council item is required on the agenda, these items appear in the Order of Business under section three point two E as items five and six. And that section three point two A be amended to note that when a closed session of business be required on a regular council meeting, the regular council meeting uh, shall begin at six thirty PM or as otherwise determined by the chair and the regular council meeting would resume following the closed meeting session, but shall not start prior to seven PM.
And that, is there a seconder with that?
I know that'll come forward on September eighth, yes.
Okay. And I have one, I think, if you, are you all finished, Mrs. Pearson? You, you okay?
That is all the business I received. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, I have one statement that I want to make uh, under unfinished business. And that is to let everyone know, a letter was released to the public today through the Freedom of Information Act appeal that I wrote in two thousand and twenty-one barring former councillor Marty Such from an in-camera meeting at the town of Petroya. This letter was written in response to the former councillor's defiance of the town of Petroya confidentiality policy and for his actions violating the council code of conduct. I would like to state for the public record that I wrote this letter with the belief that I acted in the best interest of the town of Petroya and I will not be committing further on this subject matter. That'll take us now to bylaws. I'll, um, I'll have, I'd like to have a motion to have the bylaws read a first and second time. Moved by councillor Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by councillor Welsh. Any discussion regarding those bylaws? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And I'd like to have a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, finally signed, sealed and numbered. I'll need a motion from council. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor Hyatt. And I will ask the clerk to read those bylaws, please.
And that is for bylaw number twenty-four of two thousand twenty-five. Being a bylaw, the corporation of the town of Petroya to establish the retention periods for certain documents and records to be kept by the corporation of the town of Petroya and to rescind by law number eighty-two of two thousand and eight, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number twenty-five of two thousand twenty-five, being a bylaw, the corporation of the town of Petroya to amend by law thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, a bylaw to provide rules governing the proceedings of council and committees and the conduct of its members, strong mayor implementation, be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number twenty-six of two thousand twenty-five, being a bylaw, the corporation of the town of Petroya to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petroya to adopt it up to and including July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I certainly realized that twenty-four of twenty-five was a lot of detailed reading and I thank you for taking the time to go through it.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving those bylaws? Opposed, that motion carries. And a motion to adjourned be in order. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by councillor Welsh. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming and have a good night.